Good evening. The Charter Township of Plymouth Board of Trustees meeting for Tuesday, January 8th, 2019 will come to order. Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Trustee Kermy.
Here.
Trustee Dempsey.
Present.
Clerk Vorva here. Trustee Heitman.
Here.
Trustee Dorchevitz.
Here.
Treasurer Clinton.
Here.
Supervisor Heisey.
Here.
We're all present. We have a quorum.
Thank you.
Here's a lanyard. Are you missing a mic?
I'm just missing the mic.
Oh.
This mic doesn't work. Can you hear me?
No. Oh, no.
It works.
What will we do?
Shorten the meeting.
Yep. All right. Well, we have some mic. We're gonna have to share a little bit tonight. Next is the Pledge of Allegiance. Chief Tidrington, would you lead us in the pledge tonight?
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next up is the approval of tonight's agenda, item C.
Mr. Supervisor.
Mr. Clerk.
I move for the approval of the Tuesday, January 8th, 2019 agenda.
Thank you. Motion's been made by Clerk Vorva. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Treasurer Clinton. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next is item D, approval of the consent agenda. Comments or questions?
Couple of questions on bills. I've given up talking about buying stuff from Napa and Plymouth because apparently we still keep doing it anyway. Batteries, we can buy down the street in the township. A concern I do have is Wade Trim. SAD in Ridgewood Hills and SAD in Deer Creek. Eight hundred and ten dollars for both for this particular month. Is that... Do we know what that's for, Patrick, or is that...
Come on. Does anybody have a microphone?
No, we got a broken... Another broken one.
One for Ridgewood and one for Deer Creek. It's up to you.
It's five, yeah.
The Deer Creek was the follow-up. They went out to remark the areas and they met with an alternate contractor in an effort to get a price quote to finish the punch list items, the limited number of items that we still have outstanding. Deer Creek, I don't know specifically. I know they did the late concrete repair and I will likely have to follow up on them, on the inspection for that.
Really, I really have a huge problem paying Wade Trim for picking poor subcontractors to do their work. And, you know, this is the third or fourth time it's happened. And, I mean, I got the worst cement of anybody in the neighborhood and, you know...
What a bad...
Well, yeah, but I got eight hundred and ten dollars on this list here that shows somebody came and looked at it. You know, we had a good company come and take a look at it and they said we should replace everything. And Wade Trim apparently says no and still charged us eight hundred and ten dollars. If you can do a double check, Patrick, I'd appreciate... You know, I hate going over and over and over if they're having problems with subcontractors. Not our problem. So, we shouldn't be paying if, you know, they can't get their stuff together, so...
They made it our problem by making us pay.
Over and over again. I mean, it's the same thing as the sewers. They picked a poor subcontractor in that one and then they charged us two months in a row for sewer contract maintenance.
You're talking about the manholes.
Manholes, yeah. Exactly. Exactly.
Well, they... Since you brought it up, I mean, they also ate a lot of that cost as well.
After we complained.
Yeah. Well, that's what you gotta do.
That's why I'm bringing this up here is, you know, you pick a poor subcontractor, don't charge the township for your mistakes. So, just wanted to bring that back up.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Need a motion?
Mr. Supervisor.
Mr. Clerk.
I move for the approval of the consent agenda for regular meeting Tuesday, January 8th, 2019.
Okay. Motion's been made by Clerk Vorva to approve the consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Trustee Heitman. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you. Next up is item E. This is public comments and questions. This is not your only opportunity during the evening to comment. We will also have comment period at the end of the meeting. We also encourage questions on individual agenda items, as long as they pertain to that particular item. Mr. Zantop.
Yes. You guys are safe. I'm not picking on you tonight. I encourage you to vote... To vote the marijuana opt-out ordinance on tonight's agenda. Although I realize tax money may come out of... Come our way, I don't approve of it because I believe that burdens put on our law enforcement will far outweigh the benefits. I consider marijuana a gateway drug, where those who use it are at risk of moving on to harder, more dangerous drugs like heroin and cocaine. Governor Horkenlooper of Colorado regrets signing the marijuana legislation and has encouraged other governors to be cautious in signing the reform laws. Businesses do not have to hire individuals that have positive drug tests and they may be terminated for random drug tests. Marijuana is not legal by the federal government and even though it'll be made legal in Michigan and Ontario, you don't want to be caught trying to bring it across the border. Companies like Interstate Trucking and Airlines are required to have federally mandated drug programs. I had eighteen hundred employees working for me and pilots and mechanics were required to have random drug testing. The first time you failed, you were sent to rehab. The second time, you lost your license for life. It's sad, but I saw a few employees that were devastated when they lost their careers. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zantop. Anyone else at this time? We just need you to state your name for the record.
Good evening. My name's Adam Water. I have the privilege of living on Tabistock Drive, which is pretty famous in this township. And I want to address the speeding issue that's occurring nonstop. I do know that we do have a police presence on that road, but sometimes it's just not enough. Just before Christmas, there was a guy that was doing seventy-five and hit somebody head-on, sent a five-hundred-pound boulder five feet to the sidewalk. Now, if it wasn't for those boulders, it would've been in my neighbor's living room. But I would like for us to maybe address something. What can we do as a neighborhood to get speed bumps, another stop sign, or something on that drought road?
Let me just address that real quick. How long have you lived in the neighborhood?
Four years.
Four?
Yes.
Okay. I will tell you that the Tabistock issue with the traffic and the speeding has been with us probably easily for decades. I know Mr. Kermy's been on this board here for many years, at least twelve...
Quarter of a century.
Quarter of a century? Okay, good. I know Mr. Vorva was a police officer in our community and they can tell you that this is not... You know, I'm not downplaying this at all. I agree with the seriousness of it. And just in the two years that I've been here, we've tried to work with many of the neighbors along Tabistock and Wayne County to implement some additional traffic calming measures. One of them are speed bumps. Another, which I personally like, would be a channeling of one-way traffic from Tabistock onto Joy Road so that you could... You could get from Tabistock onto Joy... I might have this backwards, but you can get from Tabistock onto Joy, but you cannot get from Joy onto Tabistock. And there is an engineering way, but that can be designed so that you can only get onto Joy Road because the bulk of the traffic that's going down Tabistock are people who are using it as a shortcut, but also for people who live on the Canton side of Joy and they're using that as their primary route home. And they're clearly not following the speed limit. So, we have worked with Wayne County on this. Wayne County does control all the roads in the township, so that would include Tabistock and Joy as well, and Ann Arbor Road, which is half-state and half-county. It's a long story. But we're very limited in what we can do because townships don't control their roads. It's the county. And the county has consistently said that they will not allow speed bumps or any kinds of engineered traffic controls along Tabistock. We do have a new county commissioner. We might reach out to her and see if she wants to give this a fresh examination, but certainly the current Wayne County administration and past administrations have consistently said no to traffic calming devices. We do have signs up virtually at every corner. We've had police patrols on a fairly regular basis. The chief can comment more if you want to add to that, but really, we've... If there are any other options, we're certainly open to them. But if they involve signage and road engineering solutions, then we have to rely on Wayne County.
Okay.
So, if you want, we can, you know, we can talk offline. Give me a call and, you know, we'll go over some of the things that we've done and maybe get you in touch with some of the folks from the county. But, you know, the neighborhood... There is no organized homeowners association that I'm aware of. I know that there is... They do have a Facebook page and I know that there's other folks that talk fairly regular along that stretch. And I've worked with some of your other neighbors. When you mentioned the boulder, I think that was probably... What's it? He was the TV guy. Well, he was... Used to be on TV. He was a weatherman for Channel Two.
Oh, you're talking about Randy.
Randy Burdo. Yeah.
No, I'm talking... It's actually directly across from me is where this accident happened.
Okay.
He has about four five-hundred-pound boulders lined up in front of his house on the corner of Tabistock, Court and Tabistock.
Yeah.
Randy has a bunch of tally marks on his boulder.
Oh, yeah. No, he's told me that boulder gets whacked a couple times a year, you know, and I've worked with him closely on this in the past. So, let's talk afterwards and we'll see where we can take it from here.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks.
I have one thing to add to that is, in the 1960s, there's a right-of-way that goes from Kerry's Hicks Road to Joy Road. It was never completed by the county. They decided to save the money. So, some of it goes back to that problem. And the other question I have is, was somebody killed at seventy-five miles an hour ahead on?
Thankfully, no. No. Got hit. He seemed all right. He probably came out with caution. And the other three people, whoever they were doing seventy-five, got all right. Thankfully.
Was there a reckless driving ticket for that?
I believe so, yes.
Okay. Any other comments? All right. Thank you. Anyone else at this time? Duane, are you coming back for more or no? Oh. Okay. He's got his own thing. All right. Let's move on to new business, item F1. This is the Rolling Oaks Special Assessment District Engineering Services. Patrick?
Tonight, the board is asked to authorize the preliminary engineering phase of the proposed special assessment district for rehabilitating roads for the Rolling Oaks You should have a copy of the results of the petition process. The petitions were received by the township and they demonstrate support for the process to move forward up until this point where the preliminary engineering phase is requested to be authorized. The tally is included. Support is demonstrated in both based on front footage and the number of units, well over fifty-one percent in support for each criteria... So, tonight, we have our representative from OHM Advisors, the township's consultant for SADs. This is an early stage in the process. It's... The preliminary engineering primarily is for the purpose of obtaining a cost estimate in a cross-section of the proposed fix to present to the residents at a later stage. If you have any questions, we're both here.
Yes. Now, after we get this cost assessment, the residents will be notified of that cost assessment and have an opportunity for another meeting?
Yes. Yes. At the completion of the preliminary engineering phase work, we typically conduct a second informational meeting with the residents where we present the findings, the costs.
And at that point, people can either join in or go off of the...
That's correct. The petition at the clerk's office, the names can either be crossed out after they receive that information or added on to it. There is a period of time where they can do that.
Is that a forty-five-day period from this time?
We have the... So, the process is, once we have that informational meeting, after the informational meeting, we send out a meeting summary and all the information that was distributed at the meeting to all the residents within the district. It has to be delivered by U.S. Postal Mail. And we typically give them forty-five days... Forty-five days to either add their name or take their name off the petition. Then we come back here to the board, provided that sufficient support exists for the public hearing of necessity.
So, will you give us a little engineering summary? What is the current surface? What year it was installed? And what is your preliminary assessment of what you see, observations? And why is Sherwood unique?
Well, in regard to the condition of the road, we really haven't looked at it. This is what the preliminary engineering phase really entails, start looking at the road and assessing the condition and coming up with preliminary engineering.
So, I could add to that. So, Sherwood was actually... This road here was stubbed out. And then, the charter school is right here. And when they split the land, they came in a couple of years ago and built these eight houses. So, these eight houses were built, I think, within the last five years.
That is correct. Yes. Sherwood is a different... The road is a more recent age.
So, that road is probably in excellent condition, but they're being forced to participate because they use the entry roads for access?
Correct.
So, the rest of the neighborhood is about close to twenty years, was built in, what, ninety-eight, ninety-nine timeframe? And then... But these houses were built just recently.
Yes.
Technically two separate. When they're... Rolling Oaks is a platted subdivision and then some of the states are a site condominium. So, it's two different developments.
Yeah, that's right.
But it will be one district.
Yeah.
And everybody understands that if this project doesn't go forward, the seven thousand dollars is absorbed by Plymouth Township as a cost. If they do go forward, the seven thousand is included in the cost of the SAD for each homeowner?
Yes. Yeah. Provided we receive the bids and they're within ten percent of what we told them, which always has been the case in the past, then there's a level of commitment at that time. Correct.
I believe the cul-de-sacs are in especially bad shape. We get numerous complaints and calls about the condition of the cul-de-sacs. I don't know if that was just the way they were built at the time they were built or whatever, but they... You would think that a cul-de-sac would be in better shape than a main road, but most of those cul-de-sacs are not in good condition.
I think generally from a conceptual nature, it's a combination of slab replacement with some larger replacement areas.
So, it is concrete?
It is. It's concrete and most likely on place upgrade. We'll verify that when we get flooring done, but usually what we find in that timeframe of construction, so we'll verify that when we get some few technical slow work done. And then we'll come up with a recommended, you know, public fix.
Kirk, is this one of the projects that could receive subsidy from the county allocation or it's maybe only for the engineering? I don't... Maybe we haven't talked about it yet, I know.
No. It is my... It's my plan to bring that county funding matter to your attention, possibly at the next meeting, certainly no later than February 12th. But the money from the county could be used for this, but ultimately, that is a board decision and that's why I'm going to bring it to you for a final determination. We have another SAD project in the township for this year where the... That's Litchfield, where the individual homeowners are looking to... Are going to be assessed anywhere from, I believe, twenty to twenty-five thousand dollars per house. So, we have to keep that in context. Any other questions from the board?
I think it's a good sign that three of the eight people on Sherwood Drive have already signed. So, they do understand the ins and outs and it's not just our little street, it's everything in and out of the subdivision. So, that's a good sign for me.
Yeah. I just wanted to comment the numbers on this page about who... How many have petitioned. Sixty-point-five percent based on total frontage and sixty-two-point-three percent based on number of units. That seems very high compared to...
Yes.
So, this is a difficult process to have to have homeowners pay for their own repaving of a road rather than the county, but that's... Those are good numbers, sixty percent.
Yeah, they are.
Well, that doesn't even... That doesn't necessarily mean that forty percent voted no. Just means that they got enough to get them over the hurdle.
Right.
They might not have canvassed all one hundred percent of the parcels.
So, it could be even higher, is what you're saying.
That's true.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? Questions or comments from the public on this item? Okay. I'm looking for a motion.
Mr. Supervisor.
Mr. Clerk.
I move to approve Resolution 2019-01-08-01, authorizing the engineering firm OHM Advisors to prepare plans showing the improvement, location, and estimates of cost for the proposed Rolling Oak Road Rehabilitation SAD Project as submitted and described on the received petitions for the cost not to exceed seven thousand dollars.
Thank you. Motion has been made by Clerk Vorva. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Trustee Heitman. Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Clerk Vorva, yes. Trustee Clinton?
Yes.
Chuck Kermy? Trustee Kermy?
Yes.
Jack Dempsey? Trustee Dempsey? Trustee Heitman?
Yes.
Dorchevitz?
Yes.
Motion pass.
All right. Thank you. Next is item F2. This is the meeting schedule for the Board of Trustees. Mr. Vorva.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. As you know, every year, we're charged with putting together a schedule of meetings. And you have a nice handout here showing the dates that are proposed for... Not only for the Board of Trustees meetings, but for the Planning Commission, Zoning Commission, and Downtown Development. But what we're talking about today is the Town Hall Meeting Room for the Board of Trustees.
Okay. Any comments or questions?
Yes. I have a comment. Is there any possibility we could make an adjustment in the March or April meeting schedule? Move one of those around? Have three meetings in April or three meetings in February? I know that the spring break for the school system is April 1 through 5. I don't know if people might have plans to take them on into April 9th. So, I just throw that out as... Is that any realm of possibility for something like that?
I believe April 2nd is the MML Conference. I know Mr. Kermy had mentioned that.
April 1 through 3, right, Dave? I think...
MML or MTA?
MTA.
MTA, yeah.
I have another one to think about. It's November, the second meeting, the 26th. It's two days before Thanksgiving. It's Thanksgiving week. I don't know if you may want to adjust that.
Well, we try to set these up to where they're the kind of the same Tuesdays.
They're on the cadence, I understand.
Right.
Yeah. You know, and obviously, we can cancel meetings, we can move meetings around. We did that last month. I'm looking at November right now. We don't have an election to worry about this year, but we would meet... We could... It looks like we'd be meeting on the 12th. And if we had to, we could meet on the 19th. You know, we could do a special meeting.
Well, for the township employees, when is the day off for veterans? The 11th?
Veterans Day is...
The 11th.
The 11th.
So, the 12th is a little awkward for the employees to have that off, the day before a board meeting?
No. I mean, employees are not impacted by our board meetings and typically, it's... The board pack, it's already out days before then. So, I think we just wait and see how things shake out once we get into November.
Well, as long as we're going into this with the idea that we can always cancel.
Yeah.
And we always have... We throw out the special meeting if we need it as an option, but let's make sure we have the option of canceling if we don't. So, I do like that idea.
And again, this is required by the Open Meetings Act, so it's a mandatory thing that we have to do every year. Okay. Any other questions or comments? Anything from the public? I'm looking for a motion then.
Mr. Supervisor.
Mr. Clerk.
I move that we approve the Resolution 2019-01-08-02, authorizing the formal scheduling and publication of the Charter Township of Plymouth Board of Trustees meeting schedule for calendar year 2019.
Thank you. Motion's been made by Clerk Vorva. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Treasurer Clinton. Let's... Do we... Can we do a voice vote on this? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next is item F3. This is the marijuana opt-out ordinance. Kevin Bennett has been working on this and I'd like him to take the microphone now and walk us through what this ordinance does and does not do. Chief Tidrington, if you also have any comments or questions, you're going to have to fight for a microphone, but we'll make sure that you have some say as well if you're interested. All right. Kevin, you're on.
Okay. I want to give some... Just an overview of the law itself before I get into what the board's options are. The new law, it's called the Michigan Regulation and Taxation of Marijuana Act. It refers to marijuana establishments. This terminology is different than medical marijuana facilities. They were termed facilities for medical marijuana. For recreational marijuana, they are called establishments. The law distinguishes certain types of establishments. First, they have marijuana grower, which is a person who's going to cultivate the marijuana and grow it. Second, there's a marijuana safety compliance facility, which refers to people who are licensed to test marijuana for potency and purity. Third is a marijuana processor. That means a person who's licensed to obtain marijuana from growers, process and process and package it. Next is marijuana microbusiness, which is limited to a person who's going to cultivate not more than a hundred and fifty marijuana plants. Next is marijuana retailer. That's where you would go in and buy the marijuana for use for persons who are twenty-one years of age or older. And the next is marijuana secure transporter. That's a person who transports marijuana from establishment to establishment. Unlike the Medical Marijuana Facilities Act, the medical... Pardon me, the Regulation and Taxation of Marijuana Act does not state that a municipality can prohibit certain types of establishments, such as growers or retailers. It basically states what the municipality can do is limit the number of establishments, but not the type of establishments. So, in that sense, if the township decided to limit the number of establishments and there were different types of establishments petitioning the township for license, the township would not have any say in... Or could not say, "Well, we don't want the retailers. We don't want the growers, but we'll take the compliance facilities. We'll allow that." Or "We'll allow microbusiness or processor, but we don't want the growers or retailers." Township can't do that, except if the township limits the number of establishments within its borders. If it limited it to one or two and there was more than one or two establishments that If it limited it to one or two, and there was more than one or two establishments that wanted to do business in the township, the township could select which type of establishment they wanted to elect. However, if you, if the township, just hypothetically speaking, said, "We're going to issue, we're going to allow two in our township," and only two applied, and both were retailers or growers, the township could not say, "We don't want you here." So, with that said, what the Act authorizes all municipalities in Michigan to do is to adopt an ordinance to either completely eliminate or to limit the number of medical, of marijuana establishments within its borders. Unlike Medical Marijuana Facilities Act, if the township wants to limit or prohibit marijuana establishments within its borders, it has to affirmatively adopt an ordinance. That's different than the, the Medical Marijuana Facilities Act, which required the township basically to opt in in order to allow those facilities within their borders. This one, basically, if you don't opt out, you're in and you have no control.
It could be an unlimited number.
If the township wanted to limit the number, instead of completely prohibit the number of establishments, it, the, the Act does allow the municipality to present certain restrictions, such as with respect to signs, with respect to time, place, and manner of operation, with respect to designating certain areas that are allowed for use of marijuana for people over twenty-one years of age, and to provide for municipal infraction penalties for violation of those ordinances. The one aspect that might be appealing to municipalities is the revenues to municipality for marijuana establishments. On its face, it does not seem like that much. It would certainly depend on the amount of excise taxes raised by the Act. What the law provides is that the first twenty million dollars in excise taxes are to go to research for veterans, for, to see if medical marijuana or marijuana would assist them with emotional or physical problems. After the first twenty million dollars, the law allot fifteen percent to counties that allow medical marijuana facilities, fifteen percent to municipalities. However, the fifteen percent would only be distributed to municipalities who allowed retailers or microbusinesses, not to growers or anybody else. And then thirty-five percent to schools and thirty-five percent to roads and bridges. The law, what the law states is that the Department of Licensing and Regulatory Affairs is to promulgate rules with respect to licensing. Once the Department of Licensing and Regulatory Affairs adopts those rules, then people can start submitting applications to the state for licenses. The township should have its ordinance in place before the Department of Licensing and Regulatory Affairs promulgates its rules. The law gives the department one year to promulgate the rules, but that doesn't mean that they're going to take the whole year. They could do it in two months. So, I would suggest that the township make its decision on what they're going to do relatively quickly. Does the board have any questions?
Yeah. All right. It's the old completed staff questions. What has Canton, Westland, Livonia, City of Plymouth, Salem Township, Northville Township done about this? What have they, or are they going to pass something? Do we have any information? And, you know, this is a little bit like prohibition. We're becoming a dry county, comparable to a dry county. You know, until nineteen seventy, the City of Plymouth did not allow lick, hard liquor by the glass. You couldn't buy a mixed drink, but the township allowed you to have an establishment that could drink. So, I'm trying to understand what's going to be the dynamic of this upcoming, and can it be changed if it turn? The next question is, what percentage of the Plymouth Township voters voted for this? That voted?
It was just over fifty percent.
Just over fifty?
Voted for what, though? Voted for...
For the referendum in November.
Right.
Which is not this. This is, just says, "I can, I can buy it and smoke it." This doesn't mean I can go down the street and have the growers...
But the referendum is what triggered this item tonight.
But all of the infrastructure that goes into that is what we're talking here. This is the growers, the, the, not only the retailers.
But if the people voted for it, I'm trying to understand, what was their feeling? So, it was fifty percent?
Just...
Just over. Okay. The state of Michigan, I think it was over sixty percent.
That is correct.
All right.
If I could just add to that, if I may. In Colorado, for example, overwhelmingly, the voters voted to legalize marijuana there, but seventy percent of municipalities have opted out of allowing marijuana to be sold in their communities, so...
It's like the famous economist said, the masses almost always get it wrong.
No, they, they, they want it, but...
It may not be the right thing.
They want it, but they don't want it here, is, is what I'm trying to illustrate.
Yeah, not in my backyard.
Yeah, but I want to be able to drive and get it someplace.
But that's why I asked about the surrounding communities.
It was one hundred and eighteen votes that passed by.
Pardon?
Right here is the results in Plymouth Township. One hundred and eighteen votes that passed by.
So, it was very close.
Yes.
With respect to other communities, the only ones I think I can, I'm confident speaking for would be Canton and Livonia, and both of those have opted out.
The City of Plymouth has as well, and I believe Northville Township is considering it as we are right now. I can't speak to Salem. I don't know what, I've never checked on them, but our, our comparable Boeing County surrounding communities and the city have, have all, have either approved it or they're in the process.
I know Garden City has also said no, even though they have allowed medical marijuana facilities within their jurisdiction.
So, I kind of struggle with this, and with medical marijuana, it was a more prominent issue because it had been approved by like sixty-three or sixty-four percent statewide and in Plymouth Township. And we had to, we had to have similar conversations as to whether we were going to allow, what were they called? Dispensaries? But I struggle with this because I fundamentally do not like to usurp the will of the voters, whether I agree or disagree with the outcome.
Let me, let me add to that. And again, I'm not trying to sway your mind one way or the other, but the, the ballot language is more than just, shall we smoke medical or recreational marijuana? All of the things that we're doing here tonight, all of these actions and, and all of the elements that have been laid out by Kevin tonight are also part of that, are, were part of that ballot initiative. So, you could make the argument that people knowingly said, if they really read the fine print, they could have said, "Yeah, I'm, I'm okay, I'm not personally okay with that, but I understand that that's kind of the way of the world now. I'll vote for it, knowing that my local government will have the ability to regulate it at the local level." That's a fairly sophisticated argument, but everything that we're doing here tonight, it's not like we're making this up to overturn the will of the voters. Everything we're doing here tonight is incorporated within that same ballot language. So, just food for, food for thought.
I'd like to ask Mr. Bennett and the chief, what's the status of marijuana under federal law?
It's still a class Schedule I controlled substance and is illegal.
So, that's the same class as opioids?
Yes.
Same class as heroin? Any other comments, questions, thoughts?
And this is just the first reading? There's a second reading, and then there's a requirement for publication?
Yes.
What is MTA saying about this? And is this law, this mil, this ordinance anticipated to be constitutional and correct?
I used the MTA or sample ordinance as a template for this ordinance.
All right. So, you have high confidence that what we're doing will pass scrutiny?
Absolutely.
Okay. Any other questions or comments by the board? Questions or comments by the public?
The City of Wald Lake...
Get closer, Dwayne.
The City of Wald Lake got a, the...
People on board have a bunch of money for the marijuana growers. And one woman was against it, so the board actually voted her off, off the board.
How do you do that? Can we do that?
They did, they did.
You mean she got recalled?
Hey, you can't vote somebody off the board.
They did. They, they, they could do it from Wald Lake. They all got money.
You're going down.
I know we can change the money, but I hope that doesn't happen. You guys take money from the changing of money. I, Richard and I, we're helping these people.
Helping which people, Dwayne?
People of Wald Lake.
One other thing is if we think this, there's no interest in Plymouth Township, we did have the number one grower of marijuana in Canada ready to buy the dur building. And when they were very, very interested, and the word got to them that the political climate in this particular area, Livonia and Plymouth and, and all the rest, they went to Adrian and moved everything down there, so...
That's a more conservative community.
Yeah.
Did you tell them?
And they bought twenty...
Did you tell on us?
They bought twenty houses down there, and they got to pay cash for everything, right? They bought twenty houses to, for their workers.
You could have taken credit for the economic development, rede, redevelopment of the dur property on Plymouth Road.
Believe me, Chuck.
You could have gotten reelected.
I was on the fence.
We need your name again for the record.
Can you get close to the mic, please?
We need your name again, too.
I just need a curfew because I don't really understand it, and I'm definitely not proud of it. I'm very... So, I know it tends to be a entry-level drug. It opens up to other drugs, it's a lesson's motivation, and that's what we're finding out in a lot of the communities where they need it evil. It is a paralyzer of the motivation center of the brain on the nurse. And so, the overall effect of marijuana in the community is very negative, especially since we have already a lot of apathy in our youth. I think this is one of the worst things you could do for a community, bringing in recreational marijuana. So, we need the youth and adults to be very motivated, very virtuous, and very hardworking, and this lesson's all of that. And if you do this to gain monetary gain, you are basically signed to be in the community as a big... Now, all this, growers and all that, I don't know what that means for a community. Does that bring in an element into a community that you don't want? I don't know. I mean, has this been studied? What kind of, what kind of people grow marijuana? Study marijuana? Process marijuana? Do all this stuff? Retail marijuana? Who are they? And what impacts do they have on the community? We would like to have a very strong community, a virtuous community, a part of the community people. Maybe we could be a different community than the last of the community analysis. I don't really think we need to do a comparison with other communities. We can stand apart as a township. So, that's my, I was not prepared for this. I didn't even know what we were talking about, but I do know, we don't need marijuana.
Okay.
I, I would, though...
Go ahead, Bob.
Not, not to, not to...
Looking at communities, maybe looking at them that have implemented marijuana or recreation, what's the fallout?
But just to, just to be clear on this, this doesn't, this, this doesn't mean that we're, we are either enabling, allowing, or banning marijuana. That's a state law.
Yes.
What this refers to is these particular facilities, whether we're going to allow them.
On some level, that's what we don't.
Well, but, but let's just, let's be clear that we're not, we're not voting to ban marijuana in Plymouth Township. Okay.
And, you know, maybe looking at communities that do all, maybe one of the...
Okay. Before... Hold on. Y'all set, Bob? Bless you. Chuck?
A question about, if you actually permitted the establishments, what kind of workload and headcount would you have to add in the township to implement it? Or to meet the law? Anybody have any idea?
What do you mean?
Well, don't you have to come up with rules to license them? And then you have to inspect them, enforce violations? I mean, that takes headcount or man-hours.
All licensing would be done by the Department of Licensing and Regulatory Affairs, and the township or any municipality has no authority to do anything contrary to what the, the rules that the Department of Licensing and Regulatory Affairs promulgate.
So, it will not be incremental workload?
Well, it could be...
Other than if there's police activity involved.
What, what the law allows the township to regulate would be restrictions on public signs related to marijuana establishments, regulation of the time, place, and manner of operation of the marijuana establishments, such as you can't be open past eleven o'clock at night, you can only be in this, this district or this location, you can only have people twenty-one working in the facility. Also, would, would allow the township to allow consumption of marijuana in designated areas if the township so wanted. And then if the, if there's any, any violation of the township imposed restrictions, which are minimal and limited to what I just described, it's only punishable by a municipal civil infraction, which is a fine of five hundred dollars.
All right. It's not as big a workload as I thought. Well, in, the point of the person that just spoke at the podium, so if you encourage marijuana in the community, our political and military enemies would love that because it would make us a lethargic bunch. Unmotivated, unproductive, lethargic.
We'll be ripe for a takeover, I must say.
We are, we are about to be taken over.
Okay. So, anybody else on the board? Anybody else in the public? Okay. Good. Well, I would like a, a motion on the first reading, if that is the pleasure of the board.
Do you want to rewrite this for the second reading?
No, it's a second...
Well, the words in the, on page one or two says first. It says first reading. So, you would have to change that when you came back?
No. No, we, we do the first reading of the ordinance, and then we publish, and then we come back.
We do a second reading.
We do a second reading.
Do a second reading and then publish.
Then publish. It's just for adequate public notice.
The last, the second to last sentence says hereby introduces and approves the first reading.
That's correct. That's what this is.
But when you actually have the ordinance, that'll be deleted, right?
It'd be the second reading. It'd be a, the second reading, and then you have fifteen days in which to publish. Is that correct?
Yes.
To notify the public that we have this law.
So, this is okay, saying first?
Yes.
All right.
Okay. Still looking for a motion.
Mr. Supervisor?
Mr. Clerk?
I moved it up Resolution 2019-01-08-03 authorizing the first reading of the Charter Township of Plymouth Prohibition of Marijuana Establishment Ordinance, Number 1016, Amendment 21.
Motion has been made by Clerk Vorva. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Trustee Heitman. Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Supervisor Heisey?
Yes.
Treasurer Clinton?
Yes.
Trustee Kermy?
Yes.
Trustee Dorchevitz?
Yes.
Clerk Vorva, yes. Trustee Dempsey?
Yes.
Trustee Heitman?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. Thank you very much. Next is Item F4. This is the, also the first reading of various amendments to the township's criminal code of ordinances. Kevin Bennett?
Okay. Before I get started on this, I have to call out an error that I made in this form. On the ordinance itself, I used the same template that I used for the Prohibition of Marijuana Establishments ordinance, and I did not change the title on the first page. So, I, I'm pointing that out. That's my error. It should be titled the Criminal Code Supplementation Ordinance, and I sent out an email to Sue Rams and to each of the board members this afternoon, pointing out that change.
Okay.
Okay. Substantively, what this law does, well, just by way of background, I've had some discussions with people at the Police Department about adopting some ordinances with respect to controlled substances, specifically with respect to the containers for controlled substances and for paraphernalia-type issues. And then when I was looking at this revision, some other things came up, such as use of vaping products by people less than eighteen years of age at the high school, which is not currently illegal under state law. And then just various other issues that came up. I think open house parties was another issue that came up when I was contemplating the revisions to the criminal code. And all of those are incorporated into this proposed criminal code supplementation... And all of those are incorporated into this proposed Criminal Code Supplementation. First of all, what I did in Section 2.0 is I added a number of state law provisions that the township is adopting by reference. There's a number of these here. There's fifth-degree arson, attempting to influence a juror, non-sufficient funds checks, embezzlement, aiding escape from a police officer, storing explosive materials, false representation as a police officer, et cetera. I think that there's about, maybe 30 or 40 additional state laws that are added to what is currently in the Criminal Code. Second, we added a section, this was at the request of the Police Department, for possession or use of controlled substances or chemical agents. Chemical agents would be like people use some compressed air to inhale and get a high off of that. It's not currently in the ordinances. It also outlaws possession of drug paraphernalia that does not include marijuana paraphernalia. I made that change, so that's not an issue. It includes hypodermic syringes, needles, et cetera, paraphernalia that's used for administering cocaine, heroin, or other controlled substances. We've added a loitering provision to this, which makes it illegal to be in the presence of controlled substances, or to knowingly be in the presence of controlled substances. This will help us over at court when we do prosecution. Sometimes, that's a more appealing plea, even though it's the same maximum sentence and fine, sometimes it's, it's more appealing to some people, and it's easier to get a plea bargain then. There's also something in here that says that a person who's under 21 years of age cannot use or possess marijuana, which is in accordance with state law. There's a provision in here that makes it an offense to misrepresent a person's age to obtain alcoholic liquor. As I stated, there's a, a new addition here that precludes people under 18 years of age from using tobacco, vapor, or alternative nicotine products. We added something to outlaw open house parties. Open house parties are where there's underage drinking, or use of controlled substances or marijuana by underage people, and things get out of control. It puts the person who's in control of the premises-
Yeah. And, and, go ahead Kevin, I don't want to interrupt.
Okay. It puts the person who's in control of the premises responsible for that violation.
And that is the best that we can do right now, without getting ourselves into a lot of legal expense and, and pain with respect to the Airbnb and the online house rental, short-term, long-term, house rental services that are out there. We've had residents complain about homes that have been misused by these Airbnb-type renters for house parties and, and bad conduct. Most, you know, it's like anything else. In most cases, there are no problems, but short of some kind of local attempt at regulating Airbnb that I do not want to get involved in at this time in history, this is the best we can do to control house parties, misuse of private property, and then essentially make the property owner the, the responsible party, and that's what this does.
So, people rent the house and then have a party?
Oh, yeah. Yeah. How come they aren't responsible if they rented the house?
Thought of that.
Isn't it already the case? Well, the-
The person who's in control of the premises is the liable party under the ordinance. So, if, if, if an owner of the house rents the house to somebody, it's not the owner-
It's the renter.
It's the renter.
Right.
Because they have a tenancy.
Yes.
Are, are these-
Say again, I'm confused.
They have a tenancy.
Okay. I Airbnb, I sign up with Airbnb, I rent out a house, we have minors with a party. Currently, who is responsible?
Airbnb is a different type of circumstance, because that's where the person doesn't rent the whole house, the person just rents a part of the house. At least, that's my understanding, I am not intimately familiar-
Yeah, you can do either.
And there are other, there are other online services where you can rent homes, the entire home.
So, whoever is in control of that premises, whether it be the owner or the renter, is the liable party.
Today? Before, with this ordinance?
No. There is no ordinance in place right now for open house parties.
So-
Wait a minute. You've never been able to allow minors to be drinking or smoking marijuana on your property. It's always been the owner has been responsible for that.
No. If they, go ahead Chief.
Well, one of the reasons we asked for this ordinance is that with the social media these days, a, a normal or a typical house party of 20 years ago might have 10 or 15 people. Now, we're seeing that the parents go out to dinner, the kids have a party, and next thing you know, there's 2,000 kids in the house. And there was, there was no ordinance to, to address this. And there are also times where, where parents go ahead and, and, parents are even present during some of these parties. And up until this point, we had no way to take enforcement action. So, this, this will, the drinking and so on, yeah, we could charge them individually, but this, this will address the actual house party.
You could always go after the minors, probably minor in possession, disorderly conduct, et cetera.
And the adults who are providing it or serving it.
Yeah. But that's a different crime.
Are, are these ordinances equal to state law? Greater than state law? Because the, and the basis for my question is that, are we, are we making these rules more restrictive than state law? Are we simply echoing state law so that we can prosecute locally?
Most of them, most of them are echoing state law. The, the open house party ordinance, there's not a state law counterpart to that. I mean, there's, as has been discussed, there's certain specific ordinances that could be, or certain specific statutes that could be used, which would be contributing to the delinquency of a minor, minor possession of alcohol, possession of a controlled substance, those individual ones, but this ordinance will put the person who's in charge of the premises as a charged person also.
And how do they know that? How do they know? Well, we're talking about minors. So, the open house party is not, it's not against parties, it's against parties where there's minors that are being served alcohol. So, if somebody has an open house party and there's minors and they're all drinking soda, that's not an issue?
No, it is. There's 10,000 people, 2,000 people, you said, even if they're just drinking Coca-Cola, you can write in a ticket.
Well, that's a hypothetical that we've never seen happen. Meaning, these house parties that we're talking about are underage drinkers, kids gathering at these homes.
That's my point, you already have a mechanism.
Well, but it's harder to prove that the parent knowingly provided the alcohol, or who, you know, you walk in the house and all the kids hide in the closet, and you got all kinds of kegs and beer, and, but you don't know who actually purchased it, and it's hard to, to prove that the, the owner of the house who was upstairs actually provided it.
But is it, my, but wait, let's clarify, because I think we said two different things here. The, the, the ordinance is, you violate the ordinance when you have an open house party in which there are, there is alcohol or drugs being provided to minors. If you have, you can have a party with 1,000 kids at it, and as long as the kids are not drinking, that's not a violation of this ordinance, or is it?
It is.
No. No, in my mind, it is not a violation of this ordinance.
But if the neighbor complains about this guy that came here-
But it's also, it would never happen.
There was a guy that came here and said he wanted to, wanted us to do something because his neighborhood, maybe one of you people that lived in, it's in your neighborhood, right?
Yeah.
So, he would want those children to get criminal records for having shown up at the party drinking Coca-Cola.
That's not what this ordinance does.
Right.
If you look, if you look at Section B.
Unfortunately, in that instance, there were 350 kids drinking booze.
So, Chief, so Chief, you, you get a call to a house party where you have 350 kids, and let's say they're all drinking Coke, Coca-Cola. I mean, they're gonna be making noise, they're gonna be laughing, loud music, who knows what, but, you know, what would be your recourse at that point? Disperse the crowd?
A recourse would be if it's a noise ordinance, we would try to shut it down, if it's loudspeakers or, or so on.
Right.
This, in our mind, is addressing a, a, a party that underage kids have converged on a residence, and its widespread use of alcohol and drugs.
Wouldn't it also be covered potentially under new Section 2.13, Breach of Peace?
Yep, and we were gonna get to that.
Let's get to it.
It's, it's kind of a catch-all ordinance to, you know, that, that the officers can use when, when we, typically in the summer, when, when we experience these types of parties at, at residences.
So, a Coke party?
Coca-Cola.
Coca-Cola party.
Could fall under that.
But, you know, we just gotta be careful that, to that point, you know, a crabby, a crabby neighbor doesn't use it to shut down somebody's graduation party, because they got 500 kids at this graduation party, they're all behaving themselves, but they're laughing too loud.
What, I think this might clarify it. What, what the substantive provision of this section of the ordinance states is, "A person having control over any premises, residence, or other real property shall not do either the following: knowingly allow minor to, a minor to consume or possess alcoholic beverage at a social gathering on or within that premises; knowingly allow any individual to consume or possess a controlled substance at a social gathering." So, the controlled substance provision is not limited to minors. The alcohol provision is limited to minors.
Makes sense.
Kevin, could we go back to Bob's question? I, I think clarified, clarified it for me, if I want to understand. So, basically, everything that you've put into this, everything that you've modified within this ordinance now is already at the state level.
No. The, the open house party is not a state, there's not a corresponding state law.
Okay. Let's say, let's say everything else is. So, I'll just, I'll just throw out an example. Chewing tobacco, okay? 16-year-old kids walking down the street chewing tobacco, today it's against the law. When this ordinance, if this ordinance passes, it will still be against the law. What's the difference between whether or not that's in this ordinance? Is it how it's tried in the-
It would be the, if it's, if the Township does not have an ordinance, it would have to go to the Wayne County Prosecutor. If the Township has an ordinance, it can be handled locally.
Okay. Can this ordinance, and I, and I read through a number of these, basically dictate what the penalty or the fine would be?
Yes.
Can we dictate what our court system would punish these users? Can we, can we dictate that in our ordinance?
What, what you can do is specify a penalty if you'd like. Generally, what all state laws do is they say it's punishable if it's a misdemeanor by up to 93 days in jail and a $500 fine plus court costs.
Or both.
And that, and then within those parameters, so it would be up to no money and no jail time, to 93 days and $500 plus court costs. And generally, that's within the discretion of the sentencing judge, where in those parameters the sentence should, should fit.
Okay. So, that what we've, what we've, you know, what we've put in here in terms of penalties, et cetera, mimic what the state law currently has?
Yes. I mean, what, what the Township can't do is make something legal that's illegal under state law, under the doctrine of preemption. What the Township can't do is make an offense that's a crime under state law a civil infraction locally. And what the Township cannot do is, with one limited exception, impose a penalty that's greater than 93 days in jail, or $500, and/or $500. So, the Township doesn't have the power to make, or to adopt what some people call a high misdemeanor, which is punishable by one year, or up to one year or up to two years. There are one-year and two-year misdemeanors that are allowed under state law, but Townships, under both the general Township law and the Charter of Township Act, are limited to a maximum of 93 days, with the exception of the new super drunk driving law, which, which gives the Township a little more power with respect to sentence.
Then just a follow-up question for the Chief. So, in your opinion, is this a good thing or a bad thing for our court system? In other words, if we write somebody up for chewing tobacco and spitting, 16-year-old kid chewing tobacco and spitting on the ground, it, how is this going to impact the caseload, in your opinion, of the District Court?
Well, it's, it's, actually, it's a service to our community, because we're gonna charge them in the 35th District. We don't have to go down to Wayne County, we don't have to send, it's more time-consuming for our, our officers to charge them through Wayne County versus the 35th District. So, it's, it streamlines, it streamlines the process and it keeps it within the, our community. But as far as it over, you know, the laws, with a few exceptions, as Kevin pointed out, are, we're, they mirror the state laws already. We're just adopting them as a Township ordinance. So, the officers could charge them, you know, Wayne County, or we can now charge them with, at the 35th.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, I'm just wondering, today, if that law's on the books, would one of the police officers say, "I'm not gonna bother, because I'm not gonna take this to Wayne County"? Would they be more motivated to write this up as an infraction, because it's now tried at the local level?
Perhaps, but it, it's, perhaps it's a good thing, because they, they realize that we can address the problem locally versus it not being addressed in Wayne County.
Let, let me use the vaping, underage vaping as an example. That was one that I believe came from the request of the school district.
Right.
Because the school districts wanted to have a uniform, local ordinance adoption in both Plymouth and Canton. Now, obviously, the high schools are going to have more instances, but you're gonna have underage vaping in the-
Middle schools.
In the middle schools, and heck, probably the elementary schools, too. But, it, the, it, it does give us, it, it strengthens our hand in law enforcement, because that officer now will be able to say, "You're not to be vaping on school property. We, as a society, want to, you know, we want to punish you for that." I'm not, the Wayne County Prosecutor's Office is not gonna take up a, a minor infraction like that and go through that whole system. It, it just doesn't, it doesn't happen.
So, is underage vaping, vaping been, oh, Chuck had his hand up.
Go ahead, finish with your question.
Underage vaping, is that illegal under state law? Or is it not?
On school property, it is.
On school property.
So, it's already covered. Why's the school district want something else?
Because they don't want, because they want us to be able to enforce it at the local level.
Right.
You mean, on the streets?
No.
At the schools.
In the schools.
In the 35th District.
Only since in school, some kids walking down the street.
But, but I do want to make sure that the board understands that by doing this, we're not creating a situation where we're gonna go out tomorrow and start charging and arresting, and increasing the enforcement action. It, it, it will make it easier for our officers, but I, I don't see this as changing our enforcement action whatsoever, other than where we're gonna charge them.
Are these, are these misdemeanors expungable if a minor gets charged with one of these?
I think, I need to clarify something here. Depending on the age of the person, will be depending on how it's handled. If the person is less than 17, 35th District Court has a juvenile program. A person becomes an adult for purposes of criminal law at 17 years of age. So, if somebody's less than that, and they're at school with, with a vaping device, then it would be handled by the juvenile division. Juvenile, and it's not called a conviction, it's called an adjudication. Those are sealed. They're not available to people. If somebody's 17 years old, there's a number of options that would be available. There's a act called the Homes Youthful Training Act, or HIDA. That allows a person between the ages of 17 and 23 to have a chance to have their plea of guilty held aside and not entered while they do a probation, and if they successfully complete the probation, then the case is dismissed. It's not on, this doesn't count as a conviction.
It's a diversion?
Yes.
Diversion program?
Right. And there's a number of, of other diversion programs.
There's a deferred sentence program, you can-
I, I would just be concerned about, you know, someone going to apply for a job, and, you know, they got a misdemeanor on their record for chewing tobacco and spitting.
And I think another thing that should be clarified, and I think the Chief can back me up on this, under state law, if a person is charged with a 90-day offense as opposed to a 93-day offense, fingerprinting and booking the person is optional with the Police Department or police officer. They can do what's called a written release without arresting them and taking them to the station for fingerprinting and cuff, and, and mug shots. If it's a 93-day offense, the Police Department has no choice, they have to do the fingerprinting and mug shot and formal booking. If it's a 90, 90-day offense, they don't have to. And if they don't do that, then it wouldn't be sent to Lansing if the person's convicted. There would still be a record of it in the 35th District Court, but it wouldn't be on file where you can search online. but it wouldn't be on file where you can search online with the Department of State Police's webpage called iChat.
So this one's a ninety-three day?
No, this one is a nine.
Oh, unless the penalty under state law is ninety days. Okay, never mind, ninety-three. Okay, sorry, Chuck.
Okay, Chuck.
Has anyone actually reviewed this and had a discussion with the three district court judges about this in detail?
I can tell you that other communities within the 35th District Court have these ordinances, and I use those ordinances as a model for this.
So Canton has these ordinances?
Yes.
Because I have some real concerns about giving our young people criminal records that give them more hurdles in life and making more things illegal. The parents in most of these cases are the ones that should be intervening, not the policemen and not the court. You're going to burden families with huge legal bills. If one of these kids get picked up on this, it's gonna be two to five thousand bucks for an attorney.
I don't think there's gonna be many local attorneys that would get that.
Well, they're gonna be lawyering it because the parents don't want their kids to get a criminal record.
But you can get them off.
And I'm going to ask to postpone this. I'll make a motion on that soon.
Right. Well, if I can just respond to that, again, we have more control once it's in the 35th District. Our officers have the ability to charge already through Wayne County. So if we?
Well, I want the parents to have the control, not the 35th District Court or a policeman. So, that's my feeling.
Well, unfortunately, all parents don't control their kids, and that's when law enforcement has to step in. But we do have enough discretion in these matters to, and it happens, most of the times, it would happen with us contacting the parents before somebody's charged. Again, this is not gonna increase the number of people that we charge, the kids that we charge. This is just going to charge them in a different venue where we have more control and perhaps more reasonableness through the, through the judges at the 35th District. So, it, in my view, it's a benefit versus, you know, adversely affecting these kids.
But what do you say to that? How do you, so, I mean, a kid who is seventeen gets caught with a pack of cigarettes, or a cigar, and it costs his family $5,000 to get out of it?
I'm sorry, I did not hear what you said.
No, I'm echoing your question. A kid who's seventeen gets caught with a cigar, and it costs his family $5,000 to get out of it. No, I'm looking at it right here.
You might want to look at, for the tobacco and vapor provision of the ordinance, the penalty is independent. It's subsection C.
I see, it's fifty dollars. I did read that.
I thought the only new provision is the house party. All these others are covered under state law.
Under state law, tobacco is covered, vaping is not covered under state law.
So vaping and house parties in the two?
Yes.
There's a?
It's not just vaping on school property? Is it just limited to vaping on school property?
I don't think so.
It appears to be everywhere.
Yes. Public place.
And chewing tobacco, which kids in sports like to do sometimes.
I can tell you that we've never charged, to my knowledge, any juvenile with chewing tobacco.
Yeah, I know what you're trying to accomplish.
What about Big League Chew?
When you're not here, when you, when you get a promotion or whatever, somebody may have a different philosophy. In fact, growing up in Plymouth, in the sixties and seventies, there was a particular officer?
Yes.
Was overly aggressive on the youth and created a lot of problems.
Initial CB.
He got away with a lot of things.
He still does.
Thank God we have a good chief now.
If you weren't here, how do you know?
Oh, I know who you're talking about.
Oh, I know, too.
Okay, any other questions?
Well, I just have one curiosity.
Curiosities.
According to what you've passed out, section 2.04 of the existing ordinance deals with the unauthorized practice of law?
Yes.
Can you explain that?
I know several municipalities have that ordinance, which means you cannot, practicing law would be representing somebody in a court of law without a law license.
That's opposed to the bad practice of law is not illegal.
I'm glad, because I'm sure I'm guilty of that one.
Four up here. I still have a couple questions on, on 213 and 214.
That's a weird one.
I read the language on there, and it appears to me, although, although I am not practicing law, although I'm not practicing law, it appears to me that the breach of peace and public intoxication ordinance here seem to be overbroad and vague. I move that we postpone this. Gives us time to think about this more, answer some of these questions. We're going to be affecting people's lives pretty drastically if there's some mistakes in here.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor to postpone. Is there a second?
Second.
A motion has been made by Trustee Kermey, seconded by Clerk Vorba to postpone action on item F4. Mr. Clerk, please take the roll. A yes vote would be to postpone, a no vote would be to proceed.
Trustee Heitman?
No.
Trustee Dempsey?
No.
Clerk Vorba, yes. Trustee Dorchevitz?
No.
Trustee Kermey?
Yes.
Treasurer Clinton?
No.
Supervisor Heisey?
No.
Motion fails.
Okay, so we're still back talking about the proposed ordinance. Any other comments or questions from the board?
I would just like to have a return of my question here from the, from the attorney on the overbroadness and vagueness of those two, two items, one intoxication, the other one disturbing the peace.
With respect to breach of peace, that has been ruled constitutional. In fact, there was a Plymouth Township case, I think it was Plymouth Township versus Hancock, that Judge Low deemed impermissibly overbroad and vague. The circuit judge agreed with Judge Low. The Court of Appeals reversed Judge Low and the circuit judge, and the Supreme Court denied leave to appeal on that. So the Court of Appeals ruling on that still stands.
Has it been to the, has it been through the federal courts yet?
No.
What was the case?
I think it was Plymouth Township versus Hancock.
What was the summary of the case?
This was maybe twenty years ago. I only know about the case secondhand from what Attorney Cronin told me about it. He said that there was a dispute between neighbors whereby there was one man calling his female neighbor just the filthiest, nastiest names you can think of, and he was doing it on a daily basis with a raised voice. But he was charged under that ordinance, and, like I said, it went to the Court of Appeals, and the Court of Appeals said that because there's a reasonableness standard in the ordinance, it is not overbroad.
But that reasonability is left to interpretation of the person, the law enforcement officer?
It's gonna be, under constitutional law, an ordinance or a statute can be deemed overbroad as applied or overbroad on its face.
Right.
If it's overbroad on its face, that means that it can never be applied in a legal or constitutional manner. If it's overbroad as applied, then it's overbroad only with respect to that particular case, not, not in general. And what that, the Court of Appeals ruling was in the Hancock case, was that that ordinance was not overbroad as applied. Probably overbroad on its face.
Any other comments or questions by the board? Comments or questions by the public at this point, as long as it's relevant to the ordinance?
There's still a couple of sections in here I'd like to go through.
Okay.
With respect, the next one would be, there's now a section for prostitution. Some of the police officers have told me that there's problems over at the Red Roof Inn with prostitution. This will allow us to handle that locally. Now, there's a provision for animal cruelty under state law. Animal cruelty is a felony. It would be a misdemeanor under local ordinance. But as Chief Titterington has pointed out, Wayne County Prosecutor has a, I guess, a pecking order of which cases that they're gonna prosecute. And, and this might not be one of the highest ones unless it was a high-profile case. There's now one for fraudulent schemes, which we do some, which we come across sometimes. Breach of peace, public intoxication. I want the board to know that a lot of these ordinances, I did not recreate the wheel. I looked at other municipalities' ordinances, specifically Norfield Township and Canton Township, and that's where I got a template for a lot of these. And those, those communities are within the jurisdiction of the 35th District Court.
Okay, any other comments or questions by the board? Or by the public at this time? You wanna, you gotta come back up here.
You gotta speak.
Sit into the mic, please.
Just repeat the question, too.
Can you explain that, the application of that?
Yeah. Okay, I'm just gonna read you the text of the ordinance. It says, "Any person who shall make or assist in making any noise, disturbance, trouble, or improper diversion, rout, or riot by which the peace and good order of the township are unreasonably disturbed shall be guilty of a misdemeanor." If, now, good point. That's where we get into things that would be overbroad as applied. So if this ordinance was enforced in a way that would, that would infringe upon a person's First Amendment rights, that would be called overbroad as applied, not overbroad on its face. Yes, in an unconstitutional manner. Yes, no, these, none of these ordinances can supersede a person's constitutional rights.
Any other comments or questions from the public? Okay. Again, from the board, then hearing none, we would entertain a motion from someone.
Mr. Supervisor?
Mr. Heitman?
I move to approve resolution 2019-01-08-04, authorizing the first reading of the Criminal Code Supplementation Ordinance, amendment number 22.
Thank you. Motion has been made by Trustee Heitman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Treasurer Clinton. Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Supervisor Heisey?
Yes.
Treasurer Clinton?
Yes.
Trustee Kermey?
No.
Trustee Dorchevitz?
Yes.
Clerk Vorba, yes. Trustee Dempsey?
Yes.
Trustee Heitman?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. And then we'll be revisiting this item again on, at our meeting on January 22nd, two weeks from today. Next up is supervisor and trustee comments. Just want to remind the board that we will have a study session next week, January 15th. This will be for the purpose of going over our, discussing our goals, goals, objectives, ideas, concepts for 2019. You will be provided with a list. I've gotten some feedback from several of you already for that list. Thank you very much. And we will also have an update on the status of the proposed golf course contract for Hilltop with the ADM LLC organization. That contract, I was hoping to have that before you tonight, but with the intervening holidays and lawyers and everything from, from all sides, now, just, I'm just picking on you, Kevin, we just don't have a, we just don't have a finished product for you yet. But you will have something in your agenda pack for next Tuesday to look at. It may be the original version. I'm hoping that we can get a marked up or a modified version for your review, and Kevin and I will answer any questions that you have, as well as Tony Moscone from ADM is scheduled to be here as well. And that's all I have. Bob?
A quick question. In the bills, I noticed that Albany's had like $2,600 or so. How much have we paid them? Do you know offhand?
I don't know the exact amount, but we authorized up to $14,000, I believe.
Fourteen-five.
Fourteen-five.
And the calculation that was on the invoice by, it was probably you, Kirk, that made the notes, showed what was paid to date, and so we're under, they haven't earned the entire, well, maybe they've earned it, but we have, we have not paid the full amount of the contract.
Are there some specific deliverables due, like a plan, like a business plan, for example? Is it just a drawing?
Well, we received the draft of the master plan, and Paul has, I don't know if he's billing us, but he has asked to review the contract as well. I think he's just doing that as a courtesy.
Sorry about that. Let's work.
Hey, he works. Yeah, I'm defending you. Anything else, Bob?
No, thank you.
You all set? Okay. Gary?
One quick thing. It's very, very nice to see on the resolution page that we have, the roll calls are actually in beautiful order, and it looks to be, they're random. So, in the future, could we please follow the random thing that we have on the bottom down here?
Sure.
Instead of the random things of Jerry at the last second?
I do my best.
And we just want to make sure, and Bob brought it up last year, and I think it's still very, very important that we continue to be random and nobody knows who they're gonna follow. It's very, very important to keep that going.
Thank you.
Jerry?
I just wanted to let everybody know, many of us do know that, of course, the Courthouse Grill is closed, and there was a group of citizens who have decided to put on a kind of a, a support, showing support for Sam and the Courthouse Grill slash Hillside Inn, Hillside BBQ, and Ernesto's Italian Country Inn. And there's a party going on this Friday from six till whenever it's over. The tickets are $50, and I know it's been on Facebook and other places, and it might be just a nice opportunity for people to say goodbye and thank you to the wonderful restaurants there and also to San Messina. And I think they have 350 tickets available, and I know at least a couple hundred or more have already been taken. So just a point of information, this Friday.
Jerry, is that a black tie? We should be wearing tuxedo? What the invitation looked like?
It kinda looked that way, but I'm not sure. I'm going to wear a suit and tie, but...
It's also a fundraiser for the Canton Villas Industries.
Yes, yes, it is.
Are you gonna mention election meeting?
Oh, yes, and there's gonna be an election meeting on the 16th here at Township.
That's the second meeting and the election.
That is correct.
Mark?
I'm all set, thanks.
Mr. Dempsey?
Since we have time left, yes, a couple items. And one is, it's interesting to think back on the issues that came up in the last year or two. One of them was the lawsuit with the city of Plymouth. And I just want to confirm for the record that the payment that we received was taken care of properly.
Yes, so the day after it was approved by the board last month, I transferred the $1.1 million, which was the settlement amount, into the MERS Pension Fund for the firefighters.
And I confirmed that transfer.
Great. The other thing is, this issue spelled P-A-R-C, and I understand there's a meeting coincidentally with the Election Commission meeting on the 16th at Park, where they're going to discuss what their plan is, which from reading press release, has nothing to do with taxes and elected boards and so forth. It's a private arrangement, so, interesting to see that. Any comments about that that you?
I'm not sure. I mean, I, basically, what Park, Park is a 501(c)(3). It's a, you know, a public nonprofit. They're having a meeting next Wednesday at seven o'clock at the Penn Theater to talk about the future of Park. They've been successful in holding on to some of the grants that they were promised originally. It's certainly not going to build a big theater. I think what, from what I've read from the press release, is that they're going to try to refurbish the old cafeteria there and turn it into some kind of a semi-permanent performing arts venue. I don't know what they're gonna do with the windows or the roof or any of the other infrastructure issues, out in front, the concrete or anything like that. I'm, I don't know. That's about the extent of what I know.
But it sounds very positive that it's going to continue to exist.
The positive thing is that it looks like Park, the Park will continue at Central Middle School, at least for a little while. You know, we'll see what happens until the money runs. You know, we'll see what happens until the money runs out. But I think they're going to be another, just another 501(c)(3) that's going to be out there raising money and putting on programs, kind of like the YMCA or the Plymouth Arts Council or Rotary or anybody like that. Chuck?
Two questions. One related to para. Did para, which has been dissolved, have any bills that the township has to pay? No legal bills, nothing?
Yep.
All right, so that's been cleared up. Another item for our goals, 5G is gaining momentum. So we need to think about that with the planning department and, you know, what is it going to be like having poles at twenty-five feet every two hundred fifty feet in your neighborhood? And do you want them? There's a lot to think about.
Yeah, 5G is a ways away. There's, actually, I just had a discussion with somebody today about it who's in the industry. So Bloomberg estimates it's going to cost about eight hundred billion dollars to build out 5G across the country. So it's, you know, a pretty substantial investment on behalf of the carriers. There's still a lot of technical standards to work out. Where are you going to see it primarily? Where it matters primarily is, it's, when you talk about telematics and self-driving cars and cars that talk to each other and stuff like that, they need an enormous amount of bandwidth. And if you have ten thousand cars on the freeway that they're trying to talk to each other, that's where the application comes in most hand. But where you're going to see it initially is really in high-density areas inside cities, on buildings, you know, in San Francisco, they're starting to deploy it. But I think it's quite a ways away before you'll see it in, you know, widespread use in places like here. It's at least ten years away.
Even in some of our industrial parks where we're attempting to attract high-tech businesses?
I think you'd see it inside the business.
Within their walls.
Wifi within their walls more than necessarily outside. But I could talk for hours about it if you're interested.
Yeah, please do. We'll do that next Tuesday. Anything else?
So it's one millimeter wavelength.
Here we go. All right, all set? Mr. Kermey? All right. Okay, next is public comment. Comments from the public?
One more question.
Oh, hold on.
Are there bills to review for the study session next week?
No.
No.
Yep, you're on.
... a different form of government. It's a city. It's written in a charter that they can take people off the board. Marijuana, people took off our train. They're all...
Good thing we don't have that. I would have been gone a long time ago.
Anyone else from the public tonight? All righty, thank you. We need a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Supervisor?
Heitman?
I move we adjourn at eight thirty-three.
A motion's been made by Trustee Heitman to adjourn. Is there a second? Seconded by Clerk Vorba. All those in favor of your motion signify by saying aye, aye.